All right, sorry about that.
I'm calling this meeting, a special meeting, Park and Rec at 7:05 to discuss Emory Park Pool. And is there, do we have a quorum? With Blythe, Rufus, Kate, and myself. I think four is a quorum. Jared, you're also an ex officio Park and Rec member, according to the bylaws. So I think we're all set with a quorum. Okay, great. So the agenda item for tonight is the discussion of use and/or reappropriation of current Park and Rec available capital planning funds for Emory. And what we know now is the board has been raising questions about the capital funds and our plans for Emory Park and the pool in particular, based on analysis that Jared has collected with a risk assessment and the Board of Health from Torrington. It's unlikely that the pool would be open for the summer. Reopening should only be after proper renovations. Okay, I hear you, honey. In accordance with the recommendations of the experts we've consulted. So we need to outline a path for our park system as a whole, which should inform future planning for the park and the pool. And so we're now here to discuss revisiting the idea of reappropriating the $200,000 in capital funds that were currently set aside for approved it to the pool and the new playground. I also see that we have a lot of members of the public. Oh, hi, Michael. And that's wonderful. And we're really happy that you're all here. We're going to keep this meeting to an hour. And I was hoping that we could discuss a bit and then have some public comments once we started to, once we started to discuss this topic. So perhaps in about 20 minutes, we can, we can hear the discussions from the public and we'll keep that to about five minutes. And if you want to add to the chat, you can do that as well. And that'll be a part of the public record. So Miranda, I know that you're here to also help guide this conversation, but I think what we're really trying to do discusses how to move forward with a plan to look at Emory Park. And yeah, you can't hear them. Thanks all for your patience. And so Jared, I'll, I'll pass the mic to you unless anyone from the commission has something they want to add this very moment.
All right, so just going into a little further detail what Abigail said, basically, the question came before the commission regarding opening Emory Park. And I saw some things in Emory Park that I found particularly concerning and alarming. So I, I reached out to the Health Department, the Torrington Area Health District, and asked, you know, what they generally, you know, come and inspect. And surprisingly, they said that they don't inspect the pool. All they do is test for E. coli, which is rather unusual. So I asked them if they'd be willing to come down and take a look at it anyway. When they came down, all the things that I was concerned about, the Health Department was as well, along with other things. And ultimately, it was deemed that we need to keep it closed until we come up with an engineered plan for how we're going to rectify the issues and get the pool in a good condition for use. Just to get another set of eyes, I had Kerma, which is our insurance company, come down and do a risk assessment. And they unequivocally said, we need to follow the recommendation of the Torrington Area Health District. And, you know, reiterated that the Torrington Area Health District is a, you know, state recognized department of experts. And, you know, that if they're saying it, we've got to follow it. And then ultimate, finally, I had our building inspector come down and he basically just took a look at it and, you know, just pointed to some things he was concerned about, which once again, we're just kind of all in conjunction with what we had already been told. And so ultimately, you know, we have to close the pool. It's not going to be open anytime soon. I don't expect it will be open this year. And so I asked the board, or the commission, I should say, you know, before we go out and spend the 150,000 we have in the budget, which has been sitting there for, or the capital fund, which has been sitting there for six years now. We need to determine if that's the best use of the money, if that's what the public wants. And I know that some people have said, well, it was already appropriated for the pool. But the truth of the matter is, it was, the motion was set forth to appropriate those funds for the pool originally in 2011. That was now 11 years ago. And in 11 years, we haven't been able to do anything or even come up with a plan. And I think that begs the question, why? And once again, what was good in 2011 may not be the best plan now. And I think we owe it to the residents to determine whether or not that should be the plan moving forward. And as Abigail said, you know, determine how best to, to move forward accordingly. And so what I wanted when I, you know, requested this meeting tonight was basically to have a kind of a meeting of the minds and figure out what we want to do. And it, you know, it ties all together, the pool, the master plan, the other money we have sitting in the capital fund and, and really coming up with a long range process and plan for our parks. I think it's time. You know, and Rufus kind of put it best, you know, we're at a unique crossroads here. The pool isn't in good shape. And things haven't been really going on the past two years. So we're at the point now where we really have to kind of put our money where our mouth is and, and make stuff happen. So that's just kind of what I was hoping to, the, the discussion I was hoping to generate. And the reason doubly is the town meeting is coming up. It's the end of next week on Friday. And our, our finance director, Barbara, has said that, you know, because as a result of her discussions with both the town, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, that she believes we have an avenue for reappropriation if we so choose and that there would be support for it. Provided we, you know, didn't just willy nilly request something, but instead had a, you know, a real rationale for it. And that she's kind of prepped the Board of Finance already and that she feels they'll be pretty receptive. So there you have it. I guess the next thing I would say is, what has been the process with, you know, basically with respect to parks planning? You don't want to just start doing things. Oh, let's do this here or do this there, because what you end up with is a hodgepodge. And oftentimes, you may put something in a location, think it's great, then you want to do something else. But it turns out the work you did previously now wasn't the best place to do it because you weren't thinking about the next amenity. So if we're going to sit here and come up with a plan, like we should really start to work towards that big plan. And I know there's been a lot of discussion about the master plan and its merits and yada, yada. So I was wondering, because I don't know much about the master plan committee or what kind of progress has or hasn't been made. So I think that would be a very relevant discussion because coming up with that long range plan kind of comes before everything else.
Sure. And, you know, in the, in the, a little background on planning, oftentimes, an entity has a strategic plan. And in that, it has what its vision is, its mission is, and its goals, and the impact it intends on making. Typically, then it's followed with a master plan, and that addresses the facilities of whatever that entity is. So, you know, when I joined the commission, I identified that we needed to start thinking about the future of the two parks, particularly because of Emory Park Pool. It seemed like it was a large piece of infrastructure that had, you know, been neglected for a while. And I was just curious, like, what was the, what was the future for it? And couldn't really get any answers. So I had suggested at that time that we put together a master plan for the town so they could look holistically at both parks, understand the program and the best usage of them. Look at their landscape, the topography, its relationship to the town. And so we put together a subcommittee and on that was Blythe Everett, John Grant, myself, John, Bruce Adams, Fran Goodsell, Connie Maines. And I can't feed you right now, honey. And we, we wrote the RFP, which is the Request for Proposals. It's pretty detailed. I believe it's on the town's website in the Park and Rec. And that outlined a vision for the future parks. It also outlined a strategy for the future use of Emory Park, which was more about passive recreation and the future use of Kent Common Park, which was going to be about more active recreation. We outlined that. And that was all developed with that subcommittee, which again was Connie, Blythe, Fran, Bruce, John, and myself. We put that out to bid. We had one serious response, and that was from Studio Park Ave. And that was the studio that Miranda Lovato was previously a part of. And so she went ahead and put together a proposal. The commission approved that proposal and we stalled out with funding. So we did put together a process to really go through with a real master plan. It just didn't get funded.
So you, no, you, so you didn't actually write a master plan. You came up with the framework to write one?
Yeah, we came up with the Request for Proposals. So in that, we outlined a vision for the future parks. And we wanted to have a lot of town input in the creation of the master plan, but a master plan was never written. It's just the brief for a firm to put together a master plan. Steve, you're asking about the, the cost of the proposal. And I want to say the ballpark was around 30 grand.
I have it here. I could tell you. I think I can tell you. I don't, you guys keep going. I'll figure out where it is. I have the thing. I just don't know where the price is.
I'm assuming the price. It was under separate cover, so you might not have, there was two bids because we, we wanted to judge the bids fee blind.
Do have, sorry, I do have something here. In consideration of the project scope, design services and schedule, we propose to provide these services as a lump sum fee of $23,800, not including reimbursable expenses. Then there was a breakdown. So I think for me, and I've said this before, and Abigail and I have discussed this briefly. The, I think the question, right, is, is ultimately not whether we need a park development plan or a master plan or whatever you want to call it, because we do, we absolutely do. And I would say not only for the two parks, but also for the Kent Center Fields as well, because it's just the, everything at the Kent Center School Fields needs to be replaced, literally everything. So that is, it's going to be a tremendous expense. It's unbelievable. But the question is, is do we hire a, a company to come in and do the master plan? Which is why I wanted to have Miranda so she could really tell us about the services they provide or whether it can be done in-house with an engineer on retainer. And I was speaking about this with Michael Perkins the other day. And so I've done park development plans before. But I could tell you, like, if I honestly take a look at the sheer amount of work that's going on right now, there's no way I'd be able to commit the time necessary to really come up with a park development plan in any really I'm just in any reasonable amount of time. So a real discussion about bringing on a third party. As much as I've said before, like, I'm not entirely for it. I also know that we have a one-person department, so it might be necessary. So I think a discussion about that is, is certainly going to be relevant. But Miranda, would you kind of tell us? I think a lot of people would be interested to know what exactly a master plan is, like what a company like the one you used to be a part of, what would you do? Like, what would the process be?
Sure, yeah. Hold on one second. Just turn my video on. Um, yeah, I'm looking back at, at our old proposal. And honestly, you know, various from, from place to place. And what the scope of the project is. And for this particular master plan, it was focusing on the two parks. You know, as you say, the field, the playing fields need, need some attention. So I think there is probably more now that you could certainly add to, to this master plan. And I would, I would even go as far to say that considering doing a strategic plan in there as well would be beneficial to kind of analyze not just your facilities and the parks, but how are you, how are you using them? What programs you want to run? What, what, what those facilities need to support? So if we're just getting to like a master plan, the one we kind of put together. It's first, you kind of go into the, I would just say you go into your two parks. You take a look at what you have, right? This is your analysis phase, phase one. And you do kind of a full site analysis of what the facilities are, what condition they're in. You know, you could put some information on how they're being used currently, if they're in use. And you put together a site inventory and analysis, which took kind of this breaks down graphically and with, you know, back, background report, all of what you're working with, what you have. And you can also include regional information if you like, you know, and that current uses, amenities, historic conditions. And then reviewing any documents the town has already. As far as environmental reports, things that would pertain to the parks. I'm not, from then on, you would kind of participate with your, as a client, and they would be involved in that process. And then after, coming off of that, I'm just looking at the master plan we get kind of submitted. We, we have coming up with some concept plans based on what you have and the discussions you have with the clients. I might, I might actually do some, you know, move some things around. Having been here and looked here now, um, I might actually kind of, before you get the concept plans going, you need to engage this kind of as the engage and envisioning part of the process where you meet with people who are stakeholders, who have an interest in the parks to, you, you would put together, you'd probably get some groups going, maybe it's seniors, maybe it's, you know, parents with kids and other groups that are interested in the parks. And the Parks and Rec Department as a whole. And so you would probably want to meet with those various groups to, to gather feedback on how they view those parks and amenities, facilities. And then, and then from that, I would put together some concept plans of the, of your two parks or whatever it is you're proposing to look at. From that point, you would probably then take those concept plans to, you know, a full public meeting. I think it's important to kind of limit, you know, with the stakeholder groups, you can really kind of pinpoint the groups without overwhelming the process, right? So you can get some key people in on it that would have some good feedback without. And then, and then once you gather those, that feedback, you do this kinds of plans. And then at that point, you take, you take those kinds of plans to the public. They kind of look things over and then you take the feedback they receive from the, you know, the whole public meeting. Finalize your, your concept plans. And then create a final document, report, kinds of plans for, for those parks moving forward. And that's kind of the, those three pieces to the, to the project. If you're getting into like a strategic plan, which is, I think, helpful, you can kind of, it helps to drive the capital plan because you can come up with, you know, what are we, what are we doing from year to year? What's the 10-year plan? And then you can come up with very specific goals and tasks that you do, you know, each year moving forward to kind of meet, meet your strategic plan. It's a really great tool to make sure that you're staying on task and that you are kind of following what you've developed with your mission and vision, right? So creating those goals and tasks is, is helpful to keep you in line with your mission and vision and where you're going in the next few years.
So Miranda, would you say that the envisioning and engagement piece, that's where you're setting up your goals for the, you know, what you want the future parks to do or achieve? And you're doing that with input?
Yeah, I think you could start to do that there.
And then is there a time in your process where you would be engaging a engineer to do an analysis of the existing conditions?
You could. And if you have specific things that you want to take a look at, like, say you want to, you know, civil and structural engineer to look at the pool or something. I mean, if you, if you want that level of detail, you could do that in the analysis phase. I think I would envision that happening after kind of maybe this whole process, once you've kind of determined what, what, what's going to be the use of each of these parks. But you certainly could, if you wanted to, you know, if you thought that getting the pool up and running was going to be, if it was going to be like, you know, having an engineer come in was going to determine if, if that was going to be a feasible thing, then maybe, yeah, we would, we want to want to bring in other, other consultants. And it's certainly, I mean, master planning processes often, there's often engineers and other, other professionals on the team. You know, people that are, do, do surveying for, for a profession, surveying, engineering. And then also somebody that might specialize in strategic planning.
I think that, you know, the big thing is, obviously, we, we need to have a future vision. We need to understand, we have to have a future plan for the parks. So we know what the future is for the pool. And it's hard to, it's hard to have a future for the pool without a future for the parks.
Right.
Yeah, they go, they go hand in hand for sure. I mean, the, the future for the parks, the, the vision is, that is, that's a number one, that is the, the first and foremost thing that needs to be accomplished before anything else was done. Because let's say someone comes back and says, oh, it's me, 100 grand to fix the pool. But people don't want that, or people do want it. We need to know that first before we go and spend, you know, a tenth of a million dollars. So I think, I think it's, it's absolutely necessary. Now, I know in speaking with some of you that there were some concerns over whether or not, and I mentioned this briefly previously, whether or not doing a master plan, contracting with a company was necessarily the way to go. And I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that or not. I know it's, it's been bad around and discussed. You know, I've all, I've, I've said previously, I don't know if in a town this small, a, you know, and Miranda, this is no knock towards you. You and I talked about it, I remember, like my first week. I don't know if in a town this small, it's absolutely necessary. I think a lot of it can be done in-house with an engineer on retainer. And I think an engineer is going to be so important with this because we have wetlands everywhere and we have soil that is borderline unbuildable at Emory Park because of the, the amount of moisture that's contained in the soil. So I, I don't know if we necessarily need to do it. But like I said, we just also don't have a large staff. So I was talking to Michael the other day. Yeah, maybe I could do it in-house, but then I would need a staff to help with other things going on. So in, instead of that, maybe having a master plan firm come in just makes the most sense. But I think if anybody has feelings one way or another, it's good to kind of talk about it now. So we can, you know, hear all different points of views. And I will say, just something important to think about is, wow, Studio Park Ave did come in at 20, 23, eight. I would expect that that number, given times have changed, has gone up a decent amount. I know Studio Park Ave, if I'm not mistaken, Miranda has dissolved. Is that correct? Okay. And then the other company that submitted a plan was the Schmidt Design Group, which did come in right around 70,000. So we don't know when we, if we go back out for, with an RFP. It, we, we could very well be probably closer to 50,000. That's the lowest quote. Not knowing. I mean, there's really no way to say, but it's just something that we should keep in mind for sure. You know, 23,008 is, it's almost, I think we could all agree that's, that's probably not going to come back again, you know? So I'm just throwing different things out there, like I said.
Okay, so anyone's thoughts on being, being done in-house versus a retainer? And I just have up on the screen the, the phases that Miranda outlined. Because I think it's good to think about what it would take to do it. And, you know, predominantly, who would project manage? Who will facilitate? Who will analyze? Who will draw concept plans? I see a red, a hand. Have you, okay, Mary Ellen, let's, your thoughts?
Um, I don't really know how it works in a town so small, because I didn't grow up in a town this small. And I know it was done in my town in-house, but as Jared said, I mean, I know he's doing the after-school program. And I mean, that's every day. So I don't see how, I don't doubt that he could do it. I just don't see how he could do it with all the other things that he is responsible for now, you know, running this department by himself. Yeah. So I don't know what would be more cost effective, hiring a staff for him so that he can do that and they can help with all the other events? Or hiring an outside company to get the job done correctly? But in this, like you guys said, this has been in the works for so long. And everything is getting more expensive as the days pass. So this has to be done as soon as possible because we're just throwing money in the fireplace by putting everything off.
But we can't go too quickly because we don't want to throw money in the wrong direction.
No, I understand. But to help us with, like, you know, the engineers coming, like, is it even worth? Is it even possible to improve Emory Park? You know, I, I know with the wetlands that are there, I know that even bringing my kids in the, you know, you can't even really bring the kids to the park at certain points because of the rain. And what it does to the, the soil down there, like, is it, can they even bring machines down there anymore to fix anything? Or is that not even an option?
So just to answer that question specifically, we had an engineer come out. John Grant and I met with him. His name was Keith Godwell. And he has a lot of experience in civil engineering. And he felt that work could be done. But he said it would, just fixing the runoff issues from 341 and the fact that that soil, I mean, literally, if you look at the topography, I don't need a topo map to tell you that every, everything points downwards towards Emory Park. There's a mountain on one side, there's a hill on another side. And if you were to look up 341, it's pitched down towards Emory as well. So he felt work could be done, but he said it's going to take a lot. And he couldn't even begin to tell us where we'd be, but he said it would be a minimum $100,000 to fix, to do proper drainage and potentially put in a retention pond if we plan on, you know, keeping the pool there, et cetera. So obviously, he wouldn't know until he does, you know, core samples and everything else he has to do. But he felt that it was a tremendous amount of work ahead of us. So not that it can't be done, but once again, that's what this meeting is about, determining where we're going to focus our limited funds.
Well, maybe we need to think. Well, maybe we need to think beyond the existing parks. Because like you said, Emory Park is, is an expensive fix because of its topography. So going back to the, you know, analysis and, and concept phase, maybe the concept might be that Emory Park is not the best place for future park. It's difficult to get to. Um, kids can't get there on their own. Um, and that would beg the question, where else could we go? What, you know? What could we do instead if we, if we decide that Emory Park in, in and of itself? Um, with, and, and we'd have to go back and look at the deed again and see what, what the restrictions are. Um, but you know, maybe we go somewhere else. I don't know.
It's, uh, you might be the best to answer this question. Does the town own any other undeveloped property and it just, you know, off the top of your head that you know of, that's developable, you know?
Um, I doubt the town does. I think the, the groups that own the most undeveloped land are the various land trusts.
Got it. So.
I, I was actually thinking that similar thing today, Rufus. It was, if not everywhere, because I do think that a big thing we want to try to land is getting a water body for people to recreate in, whether that be a chlorinated pool, uh, whatever the type of pool is we have right now or a lake. I think that that's something that, I think that that's a goal for the process. Steve, you had your hand up.
Sorry, you keep going, sorry, Abigail.
And I, I wanted to give you a chance to speak, say something if you had something to say.
Yeah, I actually have a lot to say on the subject. Uh, first, I just want to give Jared, uh, uh, some props for that great Easter egg extravaganza. It was a great event and I love the music and, uh, props for that.
Um, I appreciate that.
Uh, I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission for seven years and, uh, you know, I can see why plans are great and I can also see why plans sometimes, uh, you know, are great to focus energy, but you don't end up getting much done, uh, at the end of the day. And, you know, as a, as a parent right now, there's kids in Kent, it really sucks not to have a place to take my kids to go swimming and for them to, um, and for me to, you know, hang out with other families and other people. So um, I think it's, it's kind of urgent and I would hate to see this issue just get kicked down the road year after year while we wait for a plan to be put in place. Uh, that being said, I think the, the main issue that the board should be looking at is when you're planning for something like a big asset, like a pool or swimming spot for the town, is this place gonna be sustainable? And I don't mean sustainable like, you know, uh, solar panels or energy-wise, is it gonna be sustainable where stakeholders, users, visitors are gonna use the place to the point where people are gonna want to take care of it? And I think that's the big problem with Emory Park and it's, it, we've seen that is that there is not enough people using that, even when it's been open through the years, to make it something that the community as a whole really wants to see, you know, thrive and get behind. And there's, the reason for this is not because the water's murky or, you know, it's hard to get to. It's because it just, the, the sheer kind of thing does not appeal or does not work for a lot of things that swimming bodies should do. There, there's no way to like do laps there. There's no way for aquatic fitness. There's no way to do a lot of things that people want to do. I mean, it's not even really a nice place, you know, to hang out on a summer day, to be honest. Uh, it's shady and dark back there. So when you're looking at, you know, possibly doing something and investing a lot of money into something, let's do it on something that's gonna be sustainable, that people are gonna really enjoy using, that all segments of the community could use. Um, so I am a firm, you know, proponent, um, that we should be looking at doing a pool at Kent Commons Park. I think that there's adequate space there. There's parking, it would be easily, you know, accessible from, you know, pedestrians, people living right in town, as well as people who would drive there. And, um, you know, it's not gonna be cheap, but at least I feel like it would be sustainable. People would use it in the long term and it won't go into disrepair. It won't go and become something the town just, you know, let's fall apart like we've let Emory Park. This is not the first time this has come up. Um, this, this issue, this is, uh, this is, this happens every ten, twenty years with this place. So, you know, and even on a good day, Emory Park never stacked up very well to a lot of the other town swimming, um, options that are in the surrounding towns up here. So that's my two cents on the whole thing. I think you guys have a great group. Um, would love to stay involved and, uh, I'm super positive with you guys kind of, uh, looking into this. So.
Just to say on what Steve was saying, um, you know, when I was sort of knocking on doors, when I decided to get re-involved in town politics, there were a lot of people who, who said, I want a place to swim, but I don't want to go to Emory Park. And, um, part of part of the sustainability, I think, um, of a, a facility is will be the usage and the different types of things that you can do, um, with a, you know, a different type of pool, like laps. Um, you're going to be looking at a much larger, um, age group that I think would maybe use, um, a different location and a different, different type of pool.
Uh, you're saying, looking at an expanded age group beyond what Emory Park currently serves or traditionally serves?
I mean, I, I know there were a lot of, uh, you know, elderly folks who said, I, I simply don't want to go walk down a hill, uh, try to get to Emory Park. Um, I, you know, but I want to, I want to be able to do laps. I want to be able to um, get my exercise and Emory Park doesn't.
Yeah, I don't think Emory Park's handicap accessible at all.
It isn't.
I, I know it's even hard with the kids when they were little, you know, sort of trudging down the, the walkway, but I haven't, does anyone, has anyone ever reached out to like Falls Village? Like I know Pat McCarry, when she was first slick woman there, that, you know, they just did that huge pool. She got, um, I think she got some grants for it. But that's a great facility and I, I don't know how they did it. Has anyone ever reached out to them recently to see what they did?
No, but that would be a good idea to.
Yeah. Well, that goes back to what Miranda said too, about how a master plan would take into consideration, you know, other communities, uh, and, and learning from them as well. Um, which, you know, it's great to have that person. If I can, just to circle back, um, earlier in the chat, I believe Mary Ellen asked about the survey that went out to the town. I do have the results here and I think it's relevant to what Steve was saying. Um, and to answer Mary Ellen's question. So question thirteen was, if you could make one thing happen in Kent to make it a better place, what would it be? And, um, there are something like, I don't know, the I don't know, two hundred responses, but you know, a great community center or pool. Um, either town access to a lake or a, that is clean, clean and well-maintained. Please stop spending energy and money on Emory Park. Um, based, better public facilities, uh, year-round town pool, which year-round is highly unlikely, but we know where they were going with that. Um, I could just go down here, uh, build a pool at Templeton Farms, uh, community swimming pool, community center with a pool. Um, creating a town pool. I could just, I mean, that was only the first twenty responses and half of them said pool. So, you know, piggybacking off what Steve said, clearly there's interest there and I would happen to agree, uh, wholeheartedly that if we were to choose between Emory and the Kent Commons, it's a no-brainer that Kent Commons is a better location. It's accessible. Um, it is, from what I hear, Emory is, like Steve said, it's not entirely uh, attractive period. I mean, you know, I'm talking to people here and they're like, yeah, it's buggy is, you know, all heck and it's not overly enjoyable. Um, and it's just not as accessible. But with Kent Commons, I think one thing we'd need to realize is, is simply we would put a pool there and that would be it. Cause we'd have to expand parking. There's definitely not enough parking. So it would be a pool and parking. Um, and then the tennis courts would remain and maybe a small playground in the, the pavilion. But that could be a really cool town center. Um, or rec center, center of town rec area. So I, I certainly think that if a, a pool is a real consideration, Kent Commons is where it would have to be. But I would like to say as well, most people don't realize this, but municipal pools generally operate in this area as a loss. So it would, you're, the taxpayers are subsidizing this, not only because of just the pool itself, but you'd have to hire an entirely new staff as well. You would need a pool. You know, you'd have, yeah, you have your rec director, right? But you're also gonna need a facility manager. You're gonna need lifeguards on at all times. You're gonna need a maintenance staff that knows pump rooms and all this stuff. So once again, it's just something to keep in mind that it, it was great to say, yeah, let's build a pool and it's a one-time, two-million-dollar expense. No, there's the recurring expense. And, um, it isn't, it isn't an expense, but if the taxpayers are willing to subsidize it, you know, that's, um, that's huge. And it certainly seems like at least from this community survey and, you know, anecdotally speaking with people, there is a lot of support in town for an amenity like that.
Well, I guess, um, one thing I just want to ask is knowing right now Kent Park and Rec only has two holdings, Emory and Kent Common, without knowing if there's an option for any other place to locate a pool. And if a pool is a driver for any future planning, then should we just be focusing on Kent Common and seeing what Kent Common can do for us? How, how how much we can flex that piece of land? Or should we be going out to the land trusts or trying to make a deal to try to get land to make a pool? That's not Kent Common. And if so, then we probably would also want to put together criteria of what we're looking for to try to locate the best thing. Blaise?
I was just gonna say, you know, that was what I was kind of thinking about was, you know, I, I can imagine why, you know, that some people who like the Emory Pool and would want us to kind of bring it back or do something would want to know how much would it cost? How much would it cost an engineer to tell us how much it would cost and what we would need to do and what would be involved? But for my money or for the town's money, I would rather spend our money, um, you know, if we're gonna go for an engineer looking at the site, um, where we might, you know, if, if Kent Common Park can't sustain a pool, then this is a very different discussion. Um, and, you know, it's, it's fine to, to take all of our eggs and think that we might put them into Kent Common, but there may be massive issues there that, um, will make a, a pool inappropriate for that spot. So my, you know, my feeling tends to be switching towards what can we do to figure out if Kent Common, um, air, the Kent Common area is even viable, um, for a pool like we're talking about?
So feasibility study, feasibility study of Kent Common for locating, excuse me, for locating, excuse me. Um, so an engineer to study the feasibility of locating a, under, like a chlorinated underground pool and we'd also have to figure out the appropriate scale. So maybe an engineer could help us with that to serve the, the town population. Mary Ellen, I know you were mentioning something about the stream.
Yeah, I just, I don't know. I mean, I, I grew up in a town that had several town pools, you know, it was a very big town. So it was in different locations. And it required a tremendous amount of space because it's not just the pool and then, you know, the decking around the pool. It's places where families can put chairs and blankets and then the big fence around it. And then, um, you need a lot of parking. And then, um, you know, I can't see how, you know, the tennis courts are there. I don't think anyone would want to take those out because I think the school uses those as well. I don't see how a pool can fit because the parking there now is not very good. If you have, you know, people doing the tennis court and then two families at the park, the, the lot's full. So.
I envision, I envision if you looked at that park and you wanted to build it out, that you'd have to find parking elsewhere to, to build it out. You have a very large, um, uh, parking lot just at the entrance to Templeton Farms. It's, uh, part of the Kent Volunteer Fire Department. Perhaps that could be something the town could get a shared parking agreement with to allow for overload, overflow parking. Again, it, it is an area that's accessible by, by people walking. So, you know, drop-offs are gonna be a lot easier there than at Emory Park. Um,
I think the fire department would have a problem just from other, other meetings I've heard of people using that lot there because you know, there are gonna be people that are parking where they're not supposed to be. And then that's gonna be a problem for emergency services to get in and out of the fire department. So I, I, I think Blaise was right. We have to see with an engineer before, you know, you try to make plans if that would work or not first before. I, I don't know. I just, thinking of the area, there's the big stream that runs through it. You would have to somehow.
The town of Kent is, does not have to abide by wetlands. So you're.
Oh, okay.
You have a lot more leeway there. Um, and I overlaid the town of Falls Village's, uh, fool, pool. Um, and it fits nicely right in that lower field. So, uh, you don't need as much space as you, you necessarily think, um, when you're plotting something like a pool, uh, it seems like a huge area, but when you plot it on the ground, it's really not that big. So.
And I just, Steve, real quick, um, Donna has told me that anything we want to do there that we need to go before the inland wetlands commission. So she's told me that on, on probably half a dozen occasions.
I was always under the impression the town of Kent did not have to go in front of the inland's wetlands.
Yeah, last we spoke and Ed, Ed Mattson, um, who's in here somewhere, I think, I don't know if he wants to speak or not, but, um, we had been, cause he's our, our maintenance guy now. And, uh, this had come up several times and, and I'm pretty sure, and I'm not trying to like second guess you, but I'm, I'm almost certain that we do. But obviously just because there's a stream doesn't mean we're, we can't do anything.
Just because you're within a regulated area, doesn't mean you can't do something. You just might have to put up soap fencing or try to do the excavation at a certain time of year and show that the runoff from impervious surfaces is controlled. So you're not creating an erosion issue. Doesn't mean you can't do it. Um, and, uh, it, it, they, really what they're looking for is, are you, is there an alternative that's, uh, less, uh, you know, um, is gonna have a, a lesser impact on the wetland there. I mean, the wetland is not a, um, a terribly, uh, beautiful um, wetland that needs, I mean, it starts, originated, originates at a brownfield up the street. So.
Yeah, yeah. It just to, um, go back, sorry, Abigail, just give me one sec. Sorry, um, I think it was Mary Ellen, um, uh, talking about the space too, uh, we would need, you, we're required if we have a pool to have bathrooms and shower facility and all that. So just something to keep in mind. But I wanted to go back to the engineer thing, um, which was, um, and so at my previous job, we did a, a big park development plan. It was a little over a million dollars. We received like a big award from the state of New York, uh, like six hundred grand, which was really cool. Um, but we had an engineer and basically they, we came up with a concept plan, like this is what we'd love to do, but then they had to come in, do core samples of the earth, figure out where a leach field could go, figure out where a well could be, you know, drilled. Um, and then determine if the soil was stable enough to permit building, et cetera. So that's what that concept and feasibility study would entail. And it is, it's definitely, um, you know, there's an expense to that, but there's just no way we could do any of it without it. You know, we'd have to have an engineer come in and really test out everything and they'd have to design it out for us. Um, but with the right engineer, you know, a lot can happen. So sorry, Abigail, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, and I see you have your hand up. And I also just wanted to note that, uh, we're running five minutes to eight and I'm assuming we'd all like to try to bring this to a close within the next fifteen minutes. Ed?
Oh, I just want to say that, um,
uh, like I put in the chat, 23 years ago, we discussed this, a huge amount of time on it. We discussed about purchasing a piece of property. We discussed about, um, Matt Handon and I actually presented a proposal to the town to put a pool inside the pool at Emory Park, which we did not like the idea that, uh, we put a waiting pool in for the common park. The town voted it down. They didn't see enough people would use it. Um, also at the common park, there is, the sewer and water line would be available, would be run to that if it was needed. And my opinion, if you keep, like we've always said in Kent, if you can't find a piece of property to buy, to do anything on, and that's where you need to start first with anything, or you have to work with what you have. So the common park would be a great place, but I really, when it comes down to the townspeople voting to spend money, it makes it really tough. So it'd have to be a good presentation. That's all I want to say. And as far as the, uh, inland wetlands, I get very confused because it was brought up just the other day that she said we needed uh, inland wetlands permit to, from Rick to do the new culvert pipe. But however, Rick doesn't need an inland wetlands permit to do anything over at the town garage. So I get very confused about the, uh, it is, the land is owned by the town. So it should be exempt from all of that, but I don't know. So, thank you.
And just, just to clarify, you said 23 years ago, there was studies? And that was when you were discussing buying that.
Yeah, we had prices, we had prices for, to do the two pools with Matt Handon. Um, he didn't like the recommendation for the, of Emory Park because of all the springs to put a pool inside the pool, inside the pool. Um, and that seemed the only, like the only possible place to put a pool in South Common Park. Because we agreed, like Rufus said, with the elderly people, the elderly housing, the, uh, housing up behind it, the sidewalks would be able to come to it and it would be the best spot to put it. But.
Okay.
We also had a skate, we also had a skate, skateboard park approved and in the capital plan for there also. And that got voted down when it came to build it. Uh, so it gets difficult at times and like Stephen said, I have young children. Well, I had young children and unfortunately now they're all grown up in, in college. And that's what happens to Emory Park lots of times. People grow up, they leave and then it gets forgotten for the next generation. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. And thanks for all you've done as a commissioner. Thank you, Dave. Um, anyone else, commissioners, public? Thoughts? Um, right now, what I'm gathering from this meeting is it seems like we want to get a sense of what it would take to do a feasibility study of Kent Common and understanding the, the limits of that parcel and see if we can get a pool in there.
I think that's the first step. And then if you can't do it there, where do you do it? I mean, then you start looking at other land. I don't think you're going to have much luck with the land trust, but you know, there's eight acres right next to the, uh, Kent Town Hall for sale right now. Happy to walk it with you.
Yeah, I think that would be a great, great central point for our community. If you get that.
I'll just say this, I'm sorry, I'll just say something real quick. I think the feasibility study is important. But also, you know, Jared was kind of touching on this a little bit, um, obviously there's a lot of expenses and just duties about for running a pool from year to year. And I think another important piece would be to do a pretty, um, do as good of a job, probably cost estimate, um, for what it would cost to initially put a pool in. And then, and then for future years, year after year, how much you're subsidizing, subsidizing something like that. Um, because I think that's, you know, either going to make it or break it, um, and put it to the public to see if they're willing.
I'm happy, I'm happy to do the research in the Falls Village, um, what it costs to, to install the pool and what their budgeting and what their, their real costs are on an annual basis to keep it open. So I'll, I'll take that upon myself and send any information I can to, um, to the board.
Thank you, Steve. That might be really helpful.
I think, yeah, I mean, Kent Commons is central to town. It has sewer and water, um, so that, that, those are positives. I wouldn't, you know, I'm hoping that, um, if that does not work, that, that, uh, we might have to go into conversation with the land trust because they, they own a lot of the adjoining land. And unfortunately, I agree with that. The town has not been, um, wise about purchasing land. The, the biggest, I think, mistake they made was not getting the land next to Kent Center School. Um, and, and, uh, when that happened, I think it was a very poor presentation at that time. Um, and we would have had a lot more options. Um, I, you know, uh, part of this is going to be the, um, you know, working with, um, the plan of, um, development to, you know, I mean, are there other places close to town, easily accessible for the kids and things like that, um, where a facility would be able to be used by a lot of the population. I mean, that, that, that's kind of key.
First, first things first, right?
Yeah. So I, I thank, uh, everybody who's contributed to the conversation tonight. Cause it, it's, there is no magic answer that we're going to pull out of the hat in the next meeting or two.
Does the town of Kent have an engineer that they work with? I know Planning and Zoning has an engineer that reviews plans for them. Um, could you work in conjunction with Planning and Zoning, um, to have them come and look at that lot as part of their budget?
That's a good idea. You can ask.
I mean, I think that the last plan of conservation development developed by the Planning and Zoning Commission stated that they would like to see a plan done for those, for that property, uh, in Emory Park. And I could go look it up, but in any event, I know they're redoing it now. So, I mean, I, and, and they work with anchor engineering, I think. So, I mean, you would think we could get someone out there to do a site walk, um, without having to recreate the wheel here and start, you know, blindly calling engineers.
Good suggestion.
So it is after eight. I think it's been a really good discussion and I think, uh, Rufus, like Rufus said, thank you to everyone who contributed and, and spent time with us this evening to speak, um, and, you know, kind of have a good meeting of the minds. Um, but just to circle back to the very beginning, so, uh, we have our next commission meeting Monday. It's our regular meeting. And if we are going to reallocate capital funds, we need to have that, um, figured out by Monday so that we can get it, uh, in the town meeting or on the town meeting, whatever it is, um, for that Friday, because, uh, once we miss that, then we got to wait a whole another year. So, um, that, I guess, we'll have to take this all into consideration and determine if we're going to reallocate it, how we want to request it and, um, how we want to perhaps word it so that we have the, the greatest amount of flexibility with respect to, um, how we do it, how we use it, I should say.
Is it, is it possible when you, if you reallocate money to, I don't know how specific you have to be in your wording, like can you just say to, for future engineering or future planning or the parks? What, what is the, what are the rules for?
I defer to Rufus on that one.
I'm not exactly sure how specific we have to get, so I'm not sure. Um. Ed, still, Ed, would you?
I'm, I'm here. I, I have, I don't know how the capital plan was wording, worded exactly. So I don't know, you're talking about the 150,000 Jared, correct?
Jared, you're muted.
Jared, you're muted. Sorry. Uh, actually 200,000 because we also have 50,000 for a playground at Kent Commons, but we shouldn't do anything with a playground until we know what we're going to do at that park. Cause the last thing we want to do is put in a playground and have to remove it because we're going to put a pool in, you know?
Right. I, I think that, um, we would have to look at the wording in the capital plan for the 150,000 for how it listed. I, I, I think, I don't know what the way, way the board of finance would go with it. They should approve money to be used, but they may not.
Yeah, but then the question is, how do we word it so that we, like, we're not, we don't know right now if we're going to do a master plan or what we're going to do, whether we need to get an engineer or we could do like what Steve said.
I, I would word it by saying we would like to, uh, use part of the, uh, Emory Park Capital Fund toward a feasibility plan for the common park use. And see if they grant it. If they say yes, then you're all set to tell me. I would present it at the town meeting for that, for the capital plan.
Yeah, that's our hope. Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. I would just be honest with them. Yeah.
Cause the town voters have the, have the final say on it anyway. So.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry.
No, thanks, Ed. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ed.
So if I may, before we bring this to a close, um, just not to add another, so we have 200,000, I think, I think honestly, looking at it, really the 200,000, it, it, it needs to be reallocated. Um, and, uh, I, I think, sorry, I'm, I'm starting to get tired. I'm losing my ability to be articulate. Um, but, uh, I think that it, like Ed just said, it, you know, feasibility study, and then we can determine what that feasibility study will end up including. Um, and, you know, master plan, engineer, whatever the, the whole thing ends up being. Um, but I, I just wanted to bring this back and I, I was saying this to Julia tonight. I saw her at, or Julianne Miranda. I saw them both at T-ball. Um, the fields at the Kent Center Schools are an abomination. I can't even begin to tell you, like, it is, as a professional, it, it bothers me to a level that I can't even articulate. Um, and we had an engineer, not an engineer, the building inspector come out to check out the pool. We also had him just stop in at, uh, Kent Commons. He said the backstop on the first, not Kent Commons, uh, Kent Center School. He said the backstop on the first field needs to be taken down. Um, it's, you know, the wood's starting to rot, et cetera. Um, and I can't, building metal backstops are so expensive. The fields need so much work. It's, it's crazy. And, um, that last field honestly just needs to be completely ripped up and redone if we're going to rebuild a field there. So I'd just like to include that in the discussion for how we're going to request reallocation because we need to do some serious capital improvements over there. We have a shed. The shed literally has the roof coming off and only one door. It's a barn-style doors on the shed and one of the doors is ripped off and isn't even there. I mean, everything about it, I just, I needed to speak passionately because I just came from there. It is, it's horrendous. I mean, Ab, Miranda, you saw it, Julia saw it. It's horrendous. It is unacceptable. And if we're going to continue to build these programs, we need to start investing in those fields now or we're just going to have year after year crap. I mean, I, you know, I shouldn't say this on a Zoom, but it's the truth. So I'd just like to keep that in mind. If, if there's any way to request a reallocation of it, even a portion of this to go towards improvements to those fields, it's, it's, I wholeheartedly believe it needs to be done. Thank you.
I think this is really helpful because now we're better prepared to go into our meeting on Monday.
Hey.
Yes, maybe then it won't be a two-hour meeting on Monday.
Yeah. So like, I think we can, we'll get right to, let's, let's try to get to this point of business first.
Yeah.
Um, you all, you all feel comfortable with that, commissioners?
Yes.
One thing I will just say real quick is I think you don't, you, you shouldn't limit yourself to a feasibility study. I would maybe word it as a master plan, which might include a few, you know, would maybe include a feasibility study. Uh, just so that, you know, you can include all of the facilities and parks in that reallocation, um, with that and also a feasibility study. But I would just, yeah, I don't want to get pin-holed into doing one thing when, if we need to do more.
Yeah, that, what you're saying makes sense. I think we want to do it in a broad enough way where we can say, all right, we're going to do a feasibility study and that's going to eat into 30% of the money we reallocated. And then from there, okay, now we're going to do a master plan and that's going to eat into another 30%. I think just to keep it broad so we can accomplish all of those goals would be the best way to do it. Um, that way includes a feasibility study, which may be separate from the master plan, but we can still do both. I, I agree with you, Miranda. I think that's a really good point.
We really can't do a master plan before we have that feasibility study. I, I really feel strongly about that. We, you know, why, why plan until you?
Yeah, I think, I think the feasibility study is a part of the analysis phase when, and what Miranda mapped out.
Do you have any money to start tackling those fields? I mean, those are heavily utilized by the school as well as town for Park and Rec. And I agree, they're in horrible shape. I coached soccer there and last year and they're, they're really falling into disrepair.
We have some, but we don't have nearly enough, unfortunately.
Okay.
But I promise you, Steve, I will fight that fight till the end of my time here, whenever that may be. I cannot, just every day I go to those fields, it pains me.
Again, to like the point of.
Physical displeasure.
The, the point of sustainability, like when I coached, I, I went to Miranda, who was acting as interim director. And I said, look, I got a group of people here that will come out and seed this thing and, and volunteer. I mean, it's, people care about those fields and it just, it takes having a plan and being told what to do. Um, and, you know, that's not the case for Emory Park. You're not going to get me going up there with a shovel and helping out. Um, but those fields, you know, I, I care deeply about and, uh, would be help, happy to help out on a Saturday, Sunday down there. So.
That's what I like to hear. You know, you just set yourself up now, Steve. So I'm going to be, I'm going to be sending you emails, getting you involved.
I'll bring the kaboda down. We'll have a good day out.
Nice. Sounds good to me.
I just want to say how grateful we all are as a commission to have all of this participation from the public. Thank you so much for showing up, whether you've chimed in or not. We really, 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 really appreciate having your voices as a part of our meetings.
Second that.
So I'm going to call this meeting to an end if everybody feels like they've been heard. If not, speak up. Okay. So I'm adjourning this meeting at eight. I'm making a, do I have to make a motion to adjourn the meeting or can I just adjourn it?
No one's ever made a motion before, so I don't think it really matters.
Okay. So thanks, everybody. Really productive. Appreciate all of your time and we're going to adjourn the meeting at eight 14.
Thank you all.
Thank you.